On Thursday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven oh seven P. M. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The approval of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion by Ms. Feather, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next, I'd like to get an approval of minutes for the consent agenda, the regular meeting, approval of minutes of the executive sessions, school bus inspection reports, the enrollment report, transportation report, and residency report. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion by Ms. Feather, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. And next, we'll go to personnel announcements, Ms. Strezek?
Hi, good evening. We have five appointments this evening, effective December sixteenth, Katerina Estevez, grade one Ashton, one year only. Effective December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Louis Flores, custodian nights in the transitional building. Effective January second, two thousand and twenty-five, Marissa Gerina, paraprofessional at BF Norton, and Vanessa Perez, paraprofessional at Garvin. We have one coaching appointment at Cumberland High School, effective December twelfth, Joshua Loisel, JV boys basketball coach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to report out the executive session meeting. Report of the exec session meeting on eleventh, seven, twenty twenty-four, one, seven, twenty twenty-five, and one, nine, twenty twenty-five. The committee did not take any votes this evening, executive session. So I have a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Can I have a motion to seal the minutes?
Motion to seal.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Mr. Bacon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Dr. Thornton, the superintendent's report?
Hello, good evening. Mike, take it away. First, in your package, you have something from Nezdeck for your new members. We belong to Nezdeck, New England School Development Council. They routinely give us what's called an enrollment projection. It kind of tells us how many kids we can expect to be in the district over the next several years. I pulled a few slides out just to kind of talk about them briefly. The first slide in the front of the slide deck you have talks about in the future in New England, really, in this slide, and talks about how you can see we're losing students, not a surprise if you hear the news stories. I would tell you, even though we have slowed a bit, we're still slated to be up eight point four percent over the next ten years. So we're not going to be in this situation, but you are seeing still a slid, a steady decline of students in Rhode Island. Mike? Nezda gives you what's these fancy charts. It's called cohort survival. In layman's terms, it just takes you through like, you know, from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-nine. You see the birth year, and you follow the kids down like that. You can see kind of how they expect the growth to shake out. And you can see here, they do grade combinations and show you how many kids we're going to have. And once again, you can see eight point four percent. This year, they have us only going up like half a percent, so that's around, say, twenty-six kids. But right now, we're like plus eight, if you want to just know today's number for our numbers. Mike? Before I leave enrollment, go back one, Mike. Just to give you a summary, over the next three years, we're looking to get around two hundred and twenty-four students of that. You'll have ninety-nine elementary, give or take, middle school fifty-one, high school seventy-four. The only thing I'd mention also, over the past few months, we have lost some high school students. I wanted to find out how that was, because you may recall back around, say, mid-fall, we were plus, I think, twenty-five, thirty kids for the year. Now, we're only plus eight. I wanted to kind of learn about that a little bit, so I kind of dug in a little bit with the help of the high school. And we had some students move out of town. We had some drop out for non-attendance. What happens is if someone's not in school, they get a five-day letter, a ten-day letter, a twenty-day letter, and day twenty-one, with no contact, we dropped the student. So we had some in that situation. We had three go to a charter school called Beacon and Wensocket. We have three homeschool, and we have some unenrolled. So overall, the high school did take a hit. It's around fourteen-ten right now, a little low, but that wasn't usual. I would also say, last year, when we looked at the start of the year, elementary was down around, I want to say ninety students. We're only down thirty-nine now, so we're actually gaining back on the elementary side. Overall, like I said, plus eight, and that does factor in the state aid, as you know. The more kids we get, the more state aid we get. Obviously, we want to have more students. The next cutoff is March first for our measuring for state aid. So enrollments is something we look at constantly. We have something called the portal. You know, Lori Carr in Tony's office will every day just look at our numbers, who's coming in. In the portal today, I think we had four or five students. So we're constantly getting kids coming in, also kids are leaving at the same time. So I would say across Rhode Island, the part of state gaining kids is this corner, ironically, North Smithfield, Cumberland, Lincoln to an extent, so you're seeing some movement there. At the same time, Cumberland is getting more diverse. Mike, next slide. MLL, multi-language learners. Go back, yep, thank you. Essentially, right now, our count, we have around three hundred and sixty MLL learners in Cumberland. That's going up quite a bit over time. Around Rhode Island, you're seeing a lot of MLLs coming in, and from that, RIDE's considering new regulations. They haven't been updated in seventeen years, so they're at need of being updated. However, some of the proposals, I would tell you, are making some superintendents, I think, concerned. They basically want a new reg in place where by the year twenty-nine thirty, teachers will either be, have a proficiency level certificate, or have an awareness. So our concerns would revolve around just the time and the money. You may recall the idea of right-to-read, remember that? Thing we had several years, a training program for all the teachers. So same thing here, we'd have to budget for the teachers to get this training and also find the times. Right now, they did push the regs out to the year twenty-nine thirty, because they are aware it's a challenge. I think right now, RIDE's taking comments on these regs, and they're not going to be brought to the Board of Ed, I think, for a few months. But I think we do have some concerns over the money. We have money in the state aid budget, MLL. It doesn't come close to meeting the dollar amount we need to train the teachers for the... Ms. Smith, this will be an unfunded mandate if we have this passed. So I just wanted you to know that's something that's percolating. So if you know anyone who they have these sessions around the state, you can go and comment on the regulations. And last but not least, construction first, BF Norton. We have some renderings for you, just to show you what the building, right now, the best thinking of the building. And on this side over here, Mike, the street on the left, Kilburn Street view, thank you. That's the Kilburn Street view, and you can see what it might look like in the front. That's the Broad Street view in the front of the building of BF Norton. And on the right, that's kind of a higher, right bottom, on the bottom there on the right, is a higher view from the hill behind BF Norton, if you know that area. So that's the view of the building. Once again, it's a four-track school, five hundred and seventy-five students, the same size as community. So a four-track in the north, four-track in the south. Right now, the next plans are set to be approved by RIDE in the coming month, I believe. And if all goes well still, we have shovel in the ground, June? August. August. So shovel in the ground this summer. So if you have any questions on BF Norton, you know, happy to answer any questions on that. Mike? Just some floor plans at BF. You really can't see much here, but if you want to see details of the floor plans and know what these rooms are, we can show you, you know, the actual breakout of the rooms, the common spaces. But these are the three floors. We have common areas built into this. We have a large media center in the middle. It's really a nice design. It's really an efficient design. So just a great job with our team here, with AI Three, Colliers, and the whole team. Everyone's doing a great job. Mike? Community school. I would tell you, it's probably our most challenging reno. The main part of community is as old as Garvin. You know how Garvin has that main section in the front from nineteen-twenty? Same main section here of community in the front, same concept. Right now, upper-left corner, just to let you know, we are in kind of starting the sheetrock phase. Bottom-left, we have windows cut now in some of the classrooms, that's underway. Upper-left corner, that's the office coming into shape. Bottom-right, I want to show you how old we're dealing with. We have, you know, horsehair plaster, we have knob and tube, not active, but we still have knob and tube, we're finding. So it's quite a challenge to kind of convert the old to new, but it is all happening. Mike? Upper-left here, you see now we have walls taken down for a big common area. It's going to be an open space. We hear all the ceilings now have ceiling grids in, that's underway. This is the old library, and now that we have a bathroom space here, some classroom space. And over here, here's one of our challenges we found today. This is a today challenge. We found out, back in the day, someone poured an extra inch of cement in that room, and it kind of raised it up. It's kind of an ADA violation. So now we have to probably jackhammer that out. That's one of the things you find after you kind of open up and see what you have. So that's something we're working on now. We have a great team in place, we just problem solve and move on to the next problem. Speaking of next problems, most bathrooms have drains in them, as you can see. These are community's drains. They, so we have to kind of, now that we opened it up, we found them, we're going to redo them, perfect time, right? So we're going to redo all the drains. And on the right there, that is what's called a grease trap from nineteen sixty-something. So we have to get rid of it because it's in the way of all the plumbing that's happening down there. So what we're doing is finding a lot of, I think, historical problems in the building from the age of the building, and we're addressing them. So it is challenging, but the teams are really good, so we just keep working the problem. So community is on time right now and on budget, so we're happy about that. But it is becoming an increasing challenge, given the age. So happy to answer any questions on community.
Any questions from the committee?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dean?
I'm sorry, I had questions on the population metric. Is this the only metric we use for determining or projecting population of students?
No, as far as projections, we use two different companies. The other one's called Cropper, and RIDE actually likes Cropper better than Nezdeck. And they both do a cohort survival method, if you will, and will look at housing starts, look at births in town. Cropper's a little more involved. I think they also look at like, just demographic shifts, but we use both those companies.
You know, Cropper, is that also another out-of-state company?
Yeah.
So my concern is, I was, you know, I got this, I didn't get a chance to go through it in detail, but I did go through it, and I went through the Cumberland master plan, the Cumberland Comprehensive Plan, and Cumberland was, had a population saturation rate. If every house was built in Cumberland, on every lot that was available to build, we would have had a saturation of forty-two thousand, which now we're in thirty-six and change. So it wouldn't have been horrible, but Rhode Island has passed a couple of state laws now that make the buildable lots smaller. And also, they passed the accessory dwelling unit law that, I know the council has voted against it, but that was kind of a show vote, and if anybody was to challenge it, they, you know, would be overturned, which allows an additional unit on almost every lot in Cumberland. So that would skyrocket our population if that happened. You know, and then you can say, you know, as a local, you know, resident, you can see, you know, you have the Anan Hope complex, you have the Broadview Acres complex that is being proposed now, you have the Manville Road, there's fourteen units going in, and that will, you know, cross, there's the McNulty property. I think we need to do a more localized projection, so we don't have to do another redistricting. Because even in the comprehensive plan, it says that the previous ten years, Cumberland grew on a much quicker projection than they had projected. In this comprehensive plan from two thousand and sixteen, we obviously, you know, you guys had stated that the population grew more than we had projected. So I don't think we can keep using the same projection matrix in order to, you know, make the decisions about the schools. I think we should get with the town council, I know there are a couple of former school committee members on the town council, go to the town and get some actual boots-on-the-ground analysis. Because, like I said, you know, the New Hampshire, wherever these companies, New England, you know, it might not be taking into account the new state laws, you know, that have the potential to balloon our population over the next decade.
Just a, sorry, just a few thoughts. I'm actually on the TRC, it's the town group that vets all the new construction, and I do go to the meetings. Ironically, I agree with you, I think, in terms of the building, a lot of construction in town. I know Anan Hope, they have a metric when they look at the number of housing units, they kind of calculate how many kids you're going to get. They can hope it's under ten kids, they say. But I know in the past, we have a place called The Crossing, right? I think we have fifty-five kids there right now.
That's what I was going to bring up.
So I'm keenly aware of the construction. I would tell you, as we keep adding on to the buildings, Cumberland Hill, Garvin, right, Ashton, we are filling up those buildings, which is a good thing. You want to have, you know, kids in our schools. With BF, if we build it, and we are, we have a hundred and seventy-five empty seats now in the south. So that's a good thing. But I agree with you, we have to look locally. When these guys do these projections, we actually do talk to them about our local things happening. Also, BVP, we have more kids coming back from BVP to Cumberland, so we also have to factor that in, right?
I just know it was, I was at all the meetings about the redistricting, and I know it was a lot of trouble for, you know, for the school administration and, you know, the school committee. So I think if we do a more localized, even if we put a committee together to try to get a finite number of what we think's going to happen over the next ten years, I probably, maybe we could avoid that. I know there's one coming in two thousand and twenty-seven, which is going to be a heartache. But, you know, that's a planned one, that's been planned for a while. We don't, we don't want any of these unplanned ones anymore. That was all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Reports of standing committees, fiscal management subcommittee update, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The fiscal subcommittee did meet tonight, and we do have three resolutions that we'll go over and some payment of the bills later. We had some updates with the budget and projections. We are looking to use more fund balance at this point than it was anticipated. We were about one point eight million that we thought when we were budgeting, we're about two point four million now. So Mr. McGrath and Dr. Thornton continue to buckle down on the numbers and see what we can do to minimize any of that use, because you cannot sustain a budget operating on our surplus, so our fund balance. And then also, we did receive an update from Chartwell tonight, and some of the numbers they gave us, I thought were really good. We're still, we're still on target with our budget with them, but one of the good things is that year-on-year, the growth rate in the change is averaging out to be twenty-two to twenty-five percent increase of students in the lunch, in taking the lunch at the school. And it has been a lot of positive feedback, so we've been quite pleased with that. And it's a good number, and it's balancing out and staying that way. And the good news is that even though they cut out the pastries, the breakfast group has come back, and we have seen some more increase on the breakfast than we saw last year at this time, so.
Thank you very much. Policy and Procedures Subcommittee, Ms. Feather?
We were, sorry, we were unable to meet, hopefully, trying to see whether or not I can schedule a meeting in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you very much. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee, Ms. Shay?
We did not meet. Hopefully, we can get a meeting in by the end of the month.
And District Health and Wellness Subcommittee, Ms. Shay?
Yep, so we did meet this evening. We did hear from Mr. Crowley pertaining to, there's a child care second summit that's going to be happening this week, I believe, at RIC. We discussed maybe possibly getting some kids together to do a polar plunge for Special Olympics in the near future. We had mentioned maybe getting some type of service hours from high school students to middle school students, whether that's sports or academics. And we still also did discuss the vaping issues that are occurring at the middle school and high school levels.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Now, comments from the public, do we have any comments from the public? Thank you very much. I just want to let you know, you just need to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Anthony Johnson, I live at twenty-five Bemis Avenue, Cumberland, Rhode Island. I first and foremost want to thank the school committee for your volunteer service. I don't know if you're paid, whatever, but I'm happy that you do it. I've been sitting at the second one now. I like that you guys question them, and don't let them just put out what they got and take it as a cookie cutter, so I appreciate that. I want to go over searches, specifically breathalyzers. Inside the policy, it states, "A student who has reasonable suspicion of the use of alcohol before or during the school day, prior to or during school-sponsored activities or on school property, may be asked to submit to a breathalyzer test." "School property shall include, but is not limited to, school grounds, buildings, buses, gymnasiums, facilities rented by the district, or other facilities or premises utilized by the school-sponsored activities or events following the GOW line shall apply." I go to number two, it says, "Breathalyzer tests shall be administered in a secure location, away from other students, by the principal, assistant principal, or designated who has been fully trained in breathalyzer tests and administrations." I know in the past, for junior proms, powder puff, or homecomings, they breathalyze the entire population coming in, and they do not separate the students. So clearly, in their policy, if they decide to breathalyze somebody, they need to bring them to a secure location away from other students. It also says that random testing of participants in school-sponsored events may be conducted by authorized school personnel. At no ways do I read a hundred percent has to be tested. So if that is happening, I think it should be brought up to Mr. Adolfo Costa, the principal, that he's violating his own policies, and that he needs to stop. And furthermore, if he is breathalysing students, especially young girls who may be freshmen, his comment should not be in front of everybody else, "Looks like you've done this before." I don't know what that reference is, whether that child's an alcoholic, or some other type of sexual indwendo, or whatever you might say, but I don't think that that should be a comment that's given to a kid in that instant that's never been breathalysed for anything, does not drink, and maybe pull them aside. Thank you for your time, please let him know, maybe that should stop if that's what's happening.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Good evening, name's Mike Bowdley, about three-three-three Neatville Highway. It's hard to believe, I used to run the sprints all the way from elementary school to college the way I come up here, that's age. Looking at school manual, I noticed the Cumberland School Policy Manual states, quote, "Making community resources available to strengthen school programs." I assembled, primarily for Cumberland Elementary Schools, a beaver display. Why? Well, seven years ago, if you follow the Valley Breeze, we inundated, at least on the Cumberland Land Trust properties, a series of beaver families, went to Diamond Hill, went to the monastery. If you cross the street over here, at Tucker Field, you're going to see one of the biggest beaver dams you ever saw in your life. So I decided, let's do something about it and educate some of our kids on this. Okay, what did I do? Okay. I assembled, primarily for the elementary schools, five poster boards, one having several very colorful pictures of beavers constructing a dam. The other poster's describing a beaver lodge, a beaver body, the impacts beavers have in environments, and so forth. Also, one-foot replica of a beaver, and one little stuffed beaver that the kids can chuck around like a football if they want to. Six reference books on beavers, and then I added a two-foot-by-two-foot plaster of Paris replica of three little beavers constructing a dam. Built into the dam was a, called a beaver deceiver, and attached to this play was a poster board, which explains what a beaver deceiver is. Of course, at the school committee, if you want to know what that is, you're going to have to visit one of the schools, I'm not going to tell you. The slave was featured first during the month of November at the Cumberland Library. If you went there in November, you saw it as you entered the library. In January, it was moved to the community school, transbuilding. Last week, I picked it up and displayed as a home right now at Cumberland Hill School in the library. Hopefully, my goal is to visit all of the elementary schools this year, and each library have a chance to display with the children. And perhaps we'll have enough time, perhaps the middle school can play with that thing. So again, I invite the school committee to visit some of these and see the kids' reaction. It was very, very good, I know, at the library, and so far, so good, it's been very positive. Kids can get educated on that. Okay, second thing, I noticed on some of the literature that Cumberland and a lot of the schools follow a STEM, the acronym STEM, is my correct? Right, we're all on the same page on that, right? Okay. When I was at OCIL, when I taught there, we added the A, make it into STEAM, which stands for the arts. Still with me? Okay. Being on the town, on the Cumberland Land Trust, I said, "I'm going to go one step further."
I'm sorry, sir, the time is up.
Okay.
But thank you.
Okay, can I ask a question for the school committee?
We listen to comments, but we do not remark on them.
No, no.
But you can ask a question.
Okay, I just had a question, if I can propose. My question was, the school was built, high school, nineteen sixty-two, I believe, Cumberland High School. Back in nineteen eighteen thirty, the Ballou family sold this property to the Cumberland School District. I'm sorry, they sold it to the town. My question to the school committee is, what was built here in nineteen eighteen thirty? I ask the kids this all the time. They go here every day, you should know it's here, history. Okay, now that I embarrassed everybody. This was the Cumberland Poor Farm, the poor people. It was a state law back in eighteen thirty, that every town would have a poorhouse, and they built it here, eighteen thirty-three, and was closed, I think, about nineteen sixty. And I think it'd benefit the kids if they knew what was housed there before they came in. So see the irony here? You go from a poorhouse to an educational institution.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other comments in the public? Okay. New business, we're discussing and are vote to approve homeschool instruction request for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Ms. Feather, second? Second by Ms. Shay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion and our vote to approve RIDE variance request of Chevron-style bus parking for the new BF Norton Elementary School. We have a representative from Colliers this evening? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Emery from Colliers. So we're here for the variance for Chevron bus-style parking at the new BF Norton Elementary School. This is a deviation from the RIDE, a RIDE regulation or guideline, and that's what the basis of this request is for. We are joined this evening by our landscape architect at Traverse, his name's Steve. He can come up and answer any particular questions that you may have, and why we're going for, why we're going forward with this variance request, and how it impacts our project at the new BF Norton Elementary School. Steve?
Good evening.
One moment, I'm sorry, Dr. Thornton and Ms. Smith?
Can you start by explaining what exactly is Chevron parking for the committee?
Sure. So Chevron parking is a manner of parking the buses for dismissal and arrival, where the buses are in a large asphalt area, like a parking lot, that's specific to the buses. They are angled and set almost in a herringbone pattern, half of a herringbone, really. The idea is that the front of the bus, where the kids are getting on and off, and which the doors are typically open, are away from the rear ends of the buses, so therefore preventing exhaust fumes from getting into the buses. It's something that has very good intentions, but we have, in my experience as landscape architect, working on many schools, we have not yet utilized this, in my own personal experience. We typically add, ask for a variance on this, and part of the reason is because, there's several reasons. First of all, most towns have an anti-idling law, in effect, or regulations in effect, that prevents buses from running while they're parked. So we do not have the issue of exhaust fumes coming into the bus behind the running bus. Second of all, the Chevron parking area takes buses in one way, and then they all stack up next to each other, and then they have to pull out and turn around and come out, typically out the same way. In the case of BF Norton, we're looking at about thirty-five thousand-plus square feet of asphalt that's going to be utilized just for the Chevron parking. That is a pretty significant portion of that site. As you all know, it's a pretty small site, as it is, and right now, we're contending with parking, utilizing green space for the students, and circulation to get cars off of Broad Street. So if we were to use this Chevron parking for what's going to be about six buses, we're using almost an acre of land that's going to be vacant and creating a heat island effect for most of the day. They're typically only used, obviously, during pickup and drop-off, so that's amounting to maybe one hour of use a day. So this is something that we come across in basically every school that we work with. Some of them have over twenty buses, so you can imagine the size of a Chevron parking area for that. Either way, it creates, as I mentioned, heat island effect. It also is, has a negative It also is, has a negative impact on stormwater. It's a lot of impervious area, so all of that stormwater is running off into the drainage system, creating more difficulties and costs associated with that. So we typically write a letter to RIDE, showing some graphics of what the Chevron parking looks like on the site, showing them how much space it takes up, and outlining all of the issues that we foresee there being, the decrease in green space, less parking space, is all of those issues. And I think, I think that pretty much covers, covers all of that.
I have one more, one more item to add. There's also a safety concern as well with students exiting in between vehicles. Instead, I think our preference would be to have the students exit on the sidewalk so that we can monitor the students entering into the building. So these are the reasons why we're moving forward with this variance request for the new BF Norton.
Madam Chair? I could have said also, this Chevron parking concept is predicated on the idea that buses all come around the same time, and they just don't. They do not. We have Chevron at Garvin, the buses aren't stacking, they don't, they come in, they leave. So just so you know, that it's, it's, it's well-intended, but it's not helpful. At a BF, there's certainly no space for this.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Mr. Bacon?
If this is removed, if they do approve, if they do approve that, what is the intention to put there? Is there?
Sorry. So in the case of BF Norton, what we're working with design-wise right now is a jug handle approach. So buses would pull into a separate lane outside of the flow of traffic on-site. There, they would be isolated for pickup and drop-off. They'd be able to turn around and come back out. So it's basically a thirty-foot-wide drive lane, which allows for bus parking on the side and bus bypass. And then it also allows for additional uses when the buses aren't there. You know, additional parking during events, if necessary, or for delivery drop-off during the day because of its proximity to the front door.
So if there's going to be additional parking, is there any way for there a redesign where we could actually be able to put a field back in this area? Because I know that there is concerns from district, you know, people in District One that that is the last remaining field currently, and they would like to see a field there. Is there any way for that to happen?
Yeah, understandable. Unfortunately, due to the size of the school and the requirements that we need for circulation and parking, we do not have the square footage that's required to accommodate a ball field. We are trying to our very best to accommodate and provide as much green space as we can, but a ball field simply will not fit in that space. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Just one question, and you mentioned it too, I mean, having a lot of asphalt and then the heat and everything on the asphalt. If the Chevron is not there, are you going to be doing anything else with it? Because you would still end up with just asphalt, and wouldn't that still continue to cause a drainage issue?
The amount of asphalt that's going to be required for that jug handle is significantly less than what's required for that large Chevron parking area. So in the, in this new, or in the design that we're using right now, there's an island that separates the jug handle from the main circulation pattern, and that has green space in it. And we're working with the engineers to actually try to utilize some of that space as a buyer retention area to help accommodate some of that stormwater.
And as a follow-up to that, I don't anticipate it'll happen. If you've already gone to Ride on this multiple times, I expect that it's probably routine for them now. But if it did not pass, and Cumberland has an ordinance about trees and shade and all of those things, are you working with the town as well to understand all of that, to make sure that we're meeting all those goals as well?
Yes, we're in constant communication with the planning department, and we understand what the planning regulations are. So if we were to be put in that position, we would do our darndest to try to accommodate all of the regulations as best as possible.
Okay. To Mr. Bacon's question, and I, I can see the town council president Kinch is here, and he might have an update on this, but they, there was a guarantee that another field would be placed down in District One, and I thought that they were looking at maybe the superfund site after the cleanup and having a large area, but I don't know if you have any update on that, Mr. Kinch?
Good evening. Off the top, no, I know you're exactly right. That's where the plan was to put it. I just have to get back to you with the mayor's office, from the mayor's office, of where we are in the negotiation, if it's still going on about acquiring that property. Okay? But I can, I'll get it over to the...
Any other questions? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the Ride variance request of Chevron-style bus parking for the new BF Norton Elementary School? Motion by Ms. Goldstein? Second by Mr. Bacon? Any discussion? All approved, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries seven to zero. Next, a discussion in our vote to approve resolutions, Ms. Smith?
Thank you. We discussed and voted on three resolutions tonight, SCPR-1, two thousand and twenty-five, zero-one, zero-two, and zero-three. All three of these were discussed in the finance subcommittee meeting, and all three passed three to zero. And I would make a motion to approve these resolutions. Oh, you can do it, it doesn't matter. All in favor? It passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Discussion in our vote to approve payment of bills?
Thank you. Yes, tonight, we have a motion to approve the bills in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, seventy-two dollars and twelve cents. And this did pass fiscal subcommittee three to zero. And again, I would make motion to approve the payment of the bills. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea? Thank you. All in favor? It passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Any school committee comments? Okay. Dr. Thornton, do we need to go into executive session?
We do not.
Very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Shea, second? Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. We adjourn tonight at seven forty-five PM.